...
Okay, council activity reports, Paul?
All I have is the budget and finance, that's Tuesday, that's it.
Did you solve anything?
Nope. Not really.
Good luck to you.
Megan?
I didn't have anything the past few weeks, which was kinda nice, 'cause that will not be the case going forward, so.
Budget, budget and finance meeting and the Chamber of Commerce meeting, that's it.
I had the tour of Corona's Brewery on the 28th, very nice facility. We had public works on the 3rd of November, talked about budget, water and sewer rates, snow plowing, a couple items on tonight's agenda. And then Friday night, I went to the vets appreciation supper of Legion, which was very nice, and I thanked the Legion and the sponsors, it was free to all vets and auxiliary members. And the last thing I got was Vet's Day tomorrow, a lot of people are flying their flags, and you drive around town, there's some flags that are in pretty bad shape, tattered and faded, so it's one morning, take a look at your flag, and if it's in bad shape, the Legion sells flags at a reasonable price. Thank you. Let's see, Bill Ludwig?
So, let's talk about, first of all, the year's going fairly well at the store for sales, we're still above last year, which, which is a good thing, we'll take that, your numbers are in the packet for this evening, and then we'll update those through the end of October by next council. Probably the biggest topic to talk about is the store's opening the 20th. As we speak, the shelves are being installed, we had two semi-loads of shelves come in today, the cooler's in, the contractors are just about done as far as they can go, we're still waiting for some part of the, the softits will not be in for another three to four weeks, but we can open without those once the cooler's up and going. So, we're gonna close this Sunday, the 16th, at 5:00 PM, and then we'll start moving Sunday night. Monday, we have vendors, salespeople in the liquor industry with semis moving, we'll have pickups and trailers, and we have firemen that are, fire people that are helping us, a lot of community members have also volunteered, so if anybody's looking for something to do, it'll be a lot of fun, we're starting at 8 o'clock Monday morning, so it's a, it's a great community project. We're working with Marco to get in, the internet installed this week, that should be about the last big thing, and then we start getting the computers and everything moved over, so soft opening will be Monday evening for all that helped work, so for the most part, it's gone really well, I can't believe it's gone this fast, so it's, it looks really, once the shelves were in there today, I thought the place looked really big until the shelves were in, I just, Chuck stopped by before the meeting, and we both think we should've made it bigger, no. It looks, it looks really good, so I think everybody will be pleased with it. So, we, we're actually working, looking at some pictures now of Old Painesville that will be put around the store after Kay McDaniel gets them framed up for us in about three weeks, so it'll really pop with our new neons and stuff that are gonna be installed, so it'll be a very nice, clean look, so very excited, I think, I think everybody will be very proud of it, so. That's what I have.
Thank you. Dan?
All of our trucks have been DOT'd, they're good to go, we're starting to work on them, get things moving. We did interviews last week and one today, so we've interviewed six people for the full-time position and five people for snow plowing, that looks good, it should be coming to you guys soon. We did tree trimming, that all wrapped up, wasn't very well. Now we're picking up leaves around town, in the curb lines and in the parks. Been working on putting together a contract for the FBO building out at the airport, we're gonna have a meeting later this week on that, try, try and move that along with the correction of the building. I have a correction on the overhead door at our new building, when I totaled up the, where all the billing was coming from, I came to 102% instead of 100%, so we had to adjust the numbers slightly. And precision electric for running the electrical, for moving some stuff, for the opening of the door, and installing the new outlets and such, that bill wasn't part of the quote, because there was unknown quantities of work there, so it was $1,534.27 in addition on the overhead door for the electrical portion.
Thank you. Jared?
All right, well, yeah, as Paul mentioned already, we had a budget and finance meeting, we discussed the proposed water and sewer rates for the coming year, so we made a recommendation, and it'll be coming to council. And then, in addition, I was with Neil at the tour for Corona's Brewing, policies and procedures, as you heard, we interviewed six candidates for the full-time position, and we had five candidates for the seasonal snowplow position, which I thought was really good, you know, all local members, which obviously comes in handy. And we had a special public works meeting, Neil already discussed that, and finally, there is potential for applying for an electric vehicle charging station that we're looking to do, there already is one in town, but the state would like to see an expanded network, so they're asking us if we wanna apply for a grant, and the chances look good for the grant, so we're just trying to work on the logistics of it and costs, I did discuss already with Chuck, and he's also helping look into that and how it'll work, so that's what I had.
Very good. Public open forum, anybody have anything they wanna talk about? It's not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on, consent agenda. We got minutes, October 13th, City Council, September 30th, special policies and procedures, August 5th, budget and finance. Got bulges of 739,287.51. Retirement of part-time public works, maintenance, Dave Schwann, he put in 12 years with the city and wants to be done effective December 1st, we're gonna miss him. Fire department, we got the men bid results, 94 international fire truck, received a bid of 4,525 from Jason Kupnick. Was there anything you wanted to add on that mic, or?
That was his bid, so whatever the fees are, we'll be coming up with it, I'm not sure what their fees are at the end.
Percentage, I don't remember what percentage, though.
I think he got quite a deal, in the future, a truck like that, we maybe should have a reserve, you know, from where we originally started it, I would like to see like 10,000, is what it is. And the last thing, item E, Chamber of Commerce joyful jamboree event and parade, got a very nice poster I'm gonna put up in the lobby, but that will be on Saturday, November 29th, 5 to 7:00 PM with the parade, let's start, parade lineup starting at 4:00, they want to use the gazebo park, and street closing, the parade from, by the Catholic Church, kinda backwards from our summer parade, going to Maple and up Minnesota and around the front of the elementary to the gazebo. Parade permit from 4 to 5:30, choir chief and police sergeant have said it's good to go, so. With that, we have the consent agenda, was there anything we wanted to pull, or we want a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second approval, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry it. Old business. They spray and neuter the cat program.
I just have a little update here, not too much to add, but I did look into what programs are available, and there is, we did have an agreement with the, what's it called?
The POC's Animal Shelter?
Yep. In, in Wilmer, where residents can bring a stray cat that they found or got, and bring it over there at no charge, however, I wanna make sure that that agreement is still in place, because I heard that it might be expiring or might be ending soon. Otherwise, residents can bring their, any cat that they catch to that center, but they would ask for a donation in that case. The program that was in place was if they say they're from Painesville, there would be no fee, I just have to check on the date to see when, when that one expires and if we're gonna renew or not.
So before we tell people to start trapping?
Yeah.
We better find out for sure what the program does.
Yeah.
Other than that, I did not find any other program that would, I guess, assist in something like this.
Megan didn't like my program.
That's right, I didn't, also, it's illegal, I did, I did speak to someone at Ridgewater, and they didn't have anything at the time, but they encouraged me to call back once spring semester starts after January to see if there's anything going on with their Vet Tech program where they might be able to work something out with us, so I will do that when the spring semester starts.
So that was kinda just info for now.
Yep.
On B, old business, safe routes to school, and Chuck, are you handling that?
Yeah, I can handle this one, as the council may recall, we were successful in getting a safe routes to school grant last year, to replace the sidewalk by the elementary school along with the pedestrian ramps on the adjacent streets, to put an RRFB crossing, push-button activated crossing signal along Burr Street of 55, and then the crossing of Business 23 along Veterans Drive would have the same type of deal, as well as the creation of a school speed zone along Business 23 adjacent to the school. The overall project cost is a little over $393,000, the grant covers $314,300 of that, this is planned to be a collaborative project with the school district, so to move forward, we'd need authorization to proceed, we, we'd have to pick construction plans and specifications, go through the MNDOT review process, in addition, there's gonna be quite a bit of collaboration with MNDOT and the county for the, the crossing signals of both Highway 55 and Business 23, so with that, we put together an engineering budget, as shown, the city's portion is about 34,000, or yeah, 34,800, with the school's estimated cost at 43,900. One clarification is this is the budget for the entire project, not just the design phase of the project.
And our funds will come from the street and sidewalks, CIP?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion or motion?
I'll move to authorize Bolton and Mink to proceed with the design phase of the project, in the amount of, well, for the full project, $78,700, of which $34,800 funds to come from the street and sidewalks CIP fund will be paid for by the city, with the remaining 43,900 to be paid for by the Painesville School District.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the safe route to schools, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry it. Looks like it's 6:15, so we'll skip to the recreational program, and we got people here that wanna talk about their request. Chris, you wanna go first?
Sure. Hi, my name is Chris O'Brien, I'm the Community Ed Director for Painesville Area Schools, and I'm here to just talk about our partnership when, for our recreational program, so I brought some stats to just kinda give you a little idea, so Community Ed, we offer a variety of recreational and enrichment programming, as well as concerts in the park, we manage Arts Council, we manage the streaming program, so we kinda have our, we're kinda dabble in a lot of different areas, but over the last, so we, our fiscal year, we had 2,200 people register for classes, and 1,044 were unique, you know, they only, they were, they've registered, but they might've registered for multiple classes, so, so of those 2,200, that, we had 1,044 unique registrants, so, so that's, and that's registering for early childhood family classes, all the way up to our 55 Alive classes, so I was looking through the data, and I was just gonna highlight some, usually highlight the youth, but I was looking at the adult numbers, that tends to sometimes get overlooked, that we do have a lot of adult programming, we partner with Green Roof to, Green Roof's area to offer 55 Alive classes, there were 273 people that got their 55 Alive over that fiscal year, and, you know, we just constantly have people asking for those classes, so we're appreciative of Green Roof for offering that space for us. We also, adult recreations really been, has an uptick, we had 10 men's basketball teams, we had 12 women's volleyball teams, we had six soccer, and these are our adult programs, so we had 210 people, just adults that took our, that are in our recreational classes, and this year, we had to turn a team away, so it's growing, and so that's a, a problem, but yet it's something to, for us to work through, so that we can get more participation in our PAC especially, that is, people wanna play that, lots of pickleball players, they would play all the time. One new program that we started, we got a little, just a tiny bit of funding to start this program, to seed it, and it's adults with disabilities, we partner with Albany, and we are targeting our program that's in our community, the Sale House, and we are trying to provide additional programming for our adults that are in our community, you might see them in, like, they come and they clean in the PAC area, but you might see them help at the community center, and they're out and about in the community, so we started a, an enrichment or an out-of-school time program for them, so this last year, we only just ran one class in the spring, and we, so we had 11 participants, but we are running one, we just got done running one in, over in Albany, they got to do a ceramics class, and then we're having a baking class, and then a make and take over at the Green Roof, so we are working with Jamie, they have a space, and we think that program's gonna grow, so more to come on that, we're excited about that new programming. Let's see, what else can I tell you? We're for youth, sorry, I lost that page. Oh, youth rec is another big one for us, so a lot of rec sports in the summer with baseball, basketball, volleyball, and we help the coaches run those programs, and we had just under 1,300 participants in that, that category as well, so we're busy with, you know, kids and adults and babies, and so it's very exciting, and I appreciate the contribution that the city makes every year to help us make that happen, to keep our prices reasonable, so, so I hope you'd be interested to continue partnering, any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Jamie, you're next.
Mine isn't quite as long as Chris's, so, sorry, I'm Jamie Abbert, I'm the Director of the Green Roof Area Center, I started in May. The Green Roof is kind of undergoing a lot of changes and updates of policies, procedures, just getting everything written down, we're kind of going through some technology updates with our computer systems, which is why you received our letter so late, so I apologize for that. What we have been focusing on is kind of updating what the community thinks the seniors need, what we've been working on all along, like Concert in the Park, has kinda, we noticed a slight decrease in attendance, so we've kinda looked outside to people that attend it, what do they wanna see differently? Menu changes were one of the things that were brought up, and I'm sure a lot of you know that people that volunteer at the Green Roof really aren't so open to changes of those menu changes, so that's my job, my job is to take your guys' suggestions, or the community's suggestions, and find a way to get my board and volunteers to be on board with that, and be happy about it, so that's some of the things that we're trying to integrate there. Other things we're working on are finding out other, what the community needs for education, phone updates, working on Android, Apple are some of the seniors' issues, we're trying to find somebody who can educate and work with the seniors at the community center to help them with those problems and struggles, with, in our community, so using our community members, our students, college students, who are maybe going into those programs for a career, that can come in and help work with our seniors, how we can bring more people into the building and educate them on what our building is about, 'cause we seem to find a lot of people that don't know what goes on under the Green Roof. And we also want to partner with our other organizations in Painesville, like Chris talked about, that's also going on with the Historical Society, we've talked with directors there on how we can integrate ourselves with them, to see how we can better serve everybody in the community, and then integrate them into the Green Roof somehow, so those are some of the things that we have going on, and the, the, sorry, where am I? I'm always, we, we had a big board meeting this morning, so I apologize, we appreciate your guys' support for all the years that we've been here, and we would appreciate it moving forward, too, because we would like to make some changes and better Green Roof for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen New, and I represent the Painesville Historical Society, along with Doris, and we thank you for your continued partnership in promoting our mission, which is kind of conserving the shared history that we have, plus offering educational things and kind of building up the community, so what we've had done in the past year, for example, was have the kids camp for the last two years, and we're planning that again this year, we had the first annual car show, which involved the community, and kind of fall, Halloween, we called it, with that, we worked in conjunction with the community center, and then the monies we made, we donated a portion of it to, or the food shelf for Thanksgiving dinners, so your support really helps in that, and we wanna continue that in the next year, you wanna hand anything?
No, I'm just really happy that we have this time to express that partnering shipping with the city is a huge part of keeping our historical center alive and vital, so thank you very much for your time.
And one more thing, we are collaborating with the high school, and they're gonna help us update the date line, because it only goes to 2000 and 2008, I think, and so from 2008 to 2025, there's kind of a gap in the history, so the high school history class is gonna help us update that, so.
Okay.
We're trying to get the community involved and work together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything we need to approve?
Yeah, we have a few things we need to talk about here, I would suggest, so we heard from the Community Education Historical Society and the Green Roof Center, but this is the second year we haven't heard from the Lake Association about the fireworks, and so that's, for me, is a little concerning on that, the other one is, there's a mistake on the request from the Green Roof Center, on the sheet, it said $8,000, but it was actually $5,000.
Well, well, that includes 3,000 for snow plowing, so we give 5,000 cash and we take care of the snow, that's the.
Why isn't, why am I just finding out about this now?
Well, we've talked about it and approved it two years ago.
Have you voted on it?
I don't, I don't remember.
I remember voting on it.
Yeah, it was brought, Jennifer could dig up the minutes, but yes, it was approved a couple of years ago that we cut the financial down, but took care of snow plowing.
Okay, so you're getting ahead of me in what I'm trying to suggest here, okay, you're getting ahead of me.
Okay.
What I'm trying to suggest here is that, since it was dropped down to 5,000, and we haven't heard anything from, for the fireworks, why don't we just take that $1,500 that we're gonna allocate for the fireworks, and just transfer it over to the, the Green Roof? I mean, the budget's gonna be the same, it's just a matter of, one program is not gonna get the money, 'cause they're not requesting it, while the other one, or if you wanna split it up three ways, or just?
I see what you mean.
You see where I'm getting at?
Yeah, this, I know this is at least the second year that nobody came to.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So you'd rather?
So, and last year, just from my experience, the fireworks were not that great, they were very short.
Thoughts? So are we gonna handle the snow plowing now, since we're, so it won't be an additional price for that, because we're gonna be handling it?
Well, the snow plowing, we valued it at 3,000.
Okay.
The contribution was considered 8,000.
Okay.
I just wondered if, since we're gonna be doing it all ourselves anyway within the city, if it was?
But I just, I'd feel, like Paul said, I'd feel better if somebody was here and said, "We appreciate your gift." But I just, I'd feel, like Paul said, I'd feel better if somebody was here and said, "We appreciate your gift."
Exactly.
But on the other hand, pretty soon, there'll be no fireworks.
True.
So, I, I'm kind of mixed about that.
Did we get a letter or anything for funding requests that I didn't?
You know, if we were to, at least hear from the Lake Association, who they got lined up, how long it's gonna be, what day it's gonna be, but we don't know anything about it. We're just basically, here's your money, go ahead. Well, I think we should look at the, at the numbers a little closer then, instead of just giving the handout, ask for it and explain what's happening with it.
Well, I, I'm not against dividing it up and, uh, next year, maybe they'll realize we need to come announce. You wanna make that a motion or?
So, okay, uh, just to open this up for more discussion, there's fifteen hundred dollars. And there is, um, three entities looking for some money. Why don't we just increase it five hundred dollars to each one, split it up? And I can, I'll make the motion. Does anyone want to discuss this?
Well, we can get the motion in a second.
Yeah. All right, let me get to my right page here.
Make the motion, is there a second?
Let me get to the right page here. Come on.
I'll second it.
Well, I'm just gonna, just gonna wing it then. I'll make the motion to approve the recreation funding request to the Green Roof Center, the Historical Society, and, what was the other one?
Community Ed.
Community Ed, sorry.
No, don't bring it down.
That's okay, that's all right.
If you.
For the funded grant request, plus an additional five hundred dollars to come from the fireworks donation.
If you already made a motion and he seconded it though, aren't we? Are you just clarifying your motion?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I don't know, I don't want to, I don't know. I mean, I'm not opposed if they don't want to come talk to us about whatever, but I think we should ask them to have a, come have a discussion about it before we. I'm not opposed to giving more money to these, um, groups by any means. I just don't know that we should necessarily take it out of the fireworks until we talk to them, because then we're gonna have to go back and, you know, I don't want to have to go back and redo it.
Well, our budget is pretty well set for next.
Yeah, I know.
And the Lake Association, I know that, I know they, they need, I know there's communication between them. So, if, if this is not one of their priorities, then.
You know, maybe, maybe they no longer need our, need our contribution. They, they, uh, increased their, what I call a tax or whatever on all the.
Mm-hmm.
So, they probably, maybe they don't need it. Uh, I'm gonna call the question, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
I was thinking.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, guys, thank you.
Y'all got a raise this year.
Thank you for coming. Okay, I forgot. Mike, let's get you up here, cause you have a meeting tonight.
So, I'm gonna officially have to be an abstention from that.
For what?
Do you want to abstain from that last motion officially, since you didn't say y or n, or did you? On the fireworks?
Do you oppose?
No, I don't, I don't oppose.
All right, you, I'll abstain, cause I don't, I didn't have time to think about it.
Well, we had a quorum, it was in a pass majority.
No, I know, I just, for the minutes.
I didn't hear any notes, so I figured.
I know, I'm just saying for the minutes, like, what do we, you know, what are we officially as? Cause I didn't, Donna and I didn't say anything. And I didn't, I was still thinking, but I don't know what, I was just asking Donna, cause Olive Tark put me as abstaining, since I didn't say anything, is what I'm saying, for the minutes.
Okay. Let's move Mike up, uh, New Business C. And that would be your relief association donation, page twenty-three.
When we had our supper at the Legion, they did a meat raffle during the supper and they donated all the money that they made from it to our relief association. And with gambling guidelines, it asks, the money has to go to the city and then the city donates it back to the relief association. So, asking for the three hundred dollars to go back, to go back to the relief.
Sounds good, if somebody wants to make that motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion for the city to accept donation of three hundred dollars from American Legion on behalf of the fire department and forward the donation onto the Fire Relief Association. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Mike.
Now, we're up to.
My favorite topic.
Old Business C, AMI Water Read Equipment Update. Who's got that one?
I'll let, uh, Dan handle that one and I can jump in if needed.
Oh, come on, you.
Yeah, I brought up the AMI meter reading, uh, system in a previous meeting. I was following through on something that was started before I arrived, but, uh, once we got into it, you, you guys approved it. We went to go do a contract. Um, they were trying to, um, have a longer contract than we felt comfortable with. We tried to reduce the terms. They wanted a longer term. I decided we better look into this a little further. I called in a couple of extra companies. We brought three different companies in here to, um, look at their AMI systems and what they had to offer and researched it a little bit farther on the age of our system, the cost of other systems, and kind of put it together and where we felt we should go. And my recommendation was that, uh, we remain the same as we are. It doesn't take us that much time to go around and use the AMR system that we have, rather than the AMI. The timing doesn't take much. We'd save the seventy thousand dollars. Give us time to look at other systems as they come up and ours ages out. And we're losing a little bit of technology and the ability to read right here in City Hall and automatic reads with a water leak. But other than that, we're not losing much. And we're saving a lot of money and potentially saving for the future, so we can have a better plan going forward.
What I'd add here is, yeah, the, the technology we have now, from what I understood, um, is changing. So, if we were to go with the system that we were initially thinking of, and I think council already approved us switching to that, uh, by the time we get everything working, there probably would be a better system out there, uh, and maybe better terms for us, cause yeah, we weren't happy with the terms that were being offered. Uh, so, if we were to continue as we are now, that's what Dan was saying is, uh, you know, it really is not much additional work, but at the same time, it gives us more time, so we're not rushing into signing up with them, because they want to lock us in for a minimum of five years to see if there's anything better out there and maybe come up with a better solution or even something that's, you know, uh, cheaper. So, we don't want to rush into this, that's the bottom line.
Well, I like the saving money aspect, that's always nice. Okay, so that was pretty much informational. Old Business D Liquor Store Payment Estimate Number Five, Change Order Number One. Joe?
Sure, as Bill mentioned earlier, uh, this, the store's pretty much substantially complete. They got some miscellaneous stuff they still have to finish, but, uh, it's definitely ready to, for move-in. Um, in your package is a copy of Pay Request Five for the project we're completed in October for two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and thirty-seven cents. In addition, there's a change order for a few requests to changes involving some electrical outlets, some Wi-Fi points and stuff. Um, so that change order was in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. So, no, the project has progressed very nicely.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve Payment Estimate Number Five, payable to Project One Construction, amount of two, no. Oh, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars, thirty-seven cents. And, that was for number five. And to pay Change Order Number One in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two fifty. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Public Works Generator Repair. Is that you down?
Yes, sir. Uh, recently, we had all of our generators inspected, which we do annually. Uh, they found, uh, one of them has a cracked fan blade inside of it. We have a history with the cracked fan blades in these generators. We had one recently that we had to replace the generator, because it exploded and caused all kinds of other damage inside the generator, which, uh, made it beyond repairable. So, there's a two thousand dollar cost to make this fan blade repair, but it could save us the thirty thousand dollar replacement. So, I recommend that we go ahead and make this repair.
Um, I move to approve the quote from Advanced Power Services, Inc. in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents to fix the generator.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the quote from Advanced Power Services for two thousand, two hundred and thirteen thirty-four, to replace the fan on the generator. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. And Dan, I think you want to talk about locator.
Yes, there's two quotes in your package for a new locator. Um, recommend Utility Logic. We went out and researched different locators. We're in need of a locator for the day-to-day routine, to find water and sewer lines and all the other locating we do. But this locator also will hook straight to the GPS and allow us to drop everything into our new mapping program that's being upgraded with Bolton &amp; Mink, so we can update our maps, get all our proper lines. We can redraw our own lines in there with this system. And everything will go automatically from the field to the computer, so there's no in-between time. You don't have to sit and input data. It goes directly there. Saves a lot of time, saves a lot of money. And the more updated your maps are, the more efficient you are out in the field, which also saves time and money. Um, kind of the top-of-the-line thing to do to keep up with technology nowadays and, uh, in the long run, it'll save us money.
What are we doing now, without it?
Uh, without it, we have the general locator that doesn't have any of the computer hookup to it. Um, we come in, log everything by hand. Our map system is way behind right now. Um, it's got a lot of inaccuracies in it that are gonna need to be corrected. Uh, now that our program is getting updated, we have the option of having Bolton &amp; Mink make those corrections for us to get it updated. Or with a locator like this, we can do those corrections on our own.
Okay.
Um, probably cheaper to do it on our own than to have someone else correct them for us.
Okay.
It's, uh, like any other electronic, our current locator is obsolete.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do with the, the current one then? We just gonna trash it or is it?
Is this, is it surplus or is it worth nothing?
We'll still continue to use it as a backup.
Okay.
Anyway, it calls in eight-eleven, whether it's the plant a tree or any type of digging, we go out with the locator and mark the.
I think we know how important that is when, um, natural gas line gets hit because of inaccurate locate, location of utilities.
But the city is just watering sewer, so can't blame, blame the city on that one. Uh, any other discussion or can we have a motion on the purchase?
Now, make a motion to approve the purchase of a new locator from Utility Logic in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars.
I'll second.
Motion and second to buy a new locator, twelve thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Derek, are you the one on the?
Yep, uh, Policies and Procedures, reviewed the new Minnesota Paid Leave Policy. This is a policy that we're required to have. Uh, a lot of the language is per state statute and it was reviewed by our labor attorney. Um, and we also have, um, an MOU from the labor, or the, from the union, asked me approving this as well. So, we're just asking for it to formally be approved, so we can put it in our policy.
And let me just, uh, number eight. Now, the city, it's pretty much a fifty-fifty match.
Yeah.
Looks like point oh four and point oh four four.
Yep. Close enough.
Another new program to take our money, but can I have a motion to approve the policy?
I'll move to approve the Minnesota Paid Leave Policy and ask me union MOU.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Okay, last item.
Yep, uh, if you guys remember, um, for prosecution services that are not covered by Stearns County, this is like for ordinance violations and things like that, we had to go with an, another attorney, uh, to handle these matters. Uh, we did find another attorney. They did handle the matter that we had at that time and they did not charge us anything for it. Uh, however, they are being asked by the state to, uh, have us sign the joint powers agreement. So, this is something coming from the state to us, because we have a, an attorney, uh, on this matter. So, um, the contract or the agreement that you see is from the state and they just want us to, uh, uh, sign the, sign it and send it back to them, which will allow the attorney to have access to data related to this matter, or to these matters.
Any further discussion or a motion?
Um, I'll make that motion, as stated on the action sheet.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve Joint Powers Agreement and Court Data Services Subscriber Amendment to CJDN Subscriber Agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Then we're down to informational. West Central Sanitation, uh, payment of two thousand, five hundred and forty-nine for the garbage surcharges. And a notice of, uh, variance hearing in Painesville Township. Uh, somebody's building a deck, is that close to Vets Park? Or why did we get a notification or? Crown Quest Road, Painesville Township. Somebody's building a deck that's bigger than, needs a variance. Other than that, we are adjourned.